And like notes and things and. Your session's night, just so you know what Natalie is sick and she won't be with us, just to give you a heads up. Fire, I'm also not waiting because she won't be with us. So our working agreements that we as board have collaborated on and embraced is that we embrace conflict and seek to resolve positively and respectfully. We address one topic at a time, we value diversity and invite multiple. Maximize the decision mission, we respect others' views and thoughts through active communication and participation. And comments on the working agreements.
Good.
And when we say conflict, we're talking about cognitive conflict. Thoughts, dissonance, struggling through ideas. Just for those at home watching. Um, third quarter budget is. All right. But you know, I'm like, it's that time of year where it's been a little rough, I might be breaking the opera.
Okay, I like it. Um. We're. Third quarter now. So just so you can see, just like it always is, the the top part of the page is third quarter of this year, the bottom is third quarter of last year. We'll run through all of the funds, starting with general fund. The big thing here is revenue through the third quarter, we typically should be around seventy five percent. You see that we're at sixty sixty two percent, so a little bit lower than normal or where we should be. The big part of that is the Esser grants, they are reimbursable grants. We just got Esser three approved over spring break, so then now we can start spending that money and getting it back, so. At the, when we did the budget last year, we knew we were getting Esser three of nine hundred and. Seventy four thousand dollars, but we just didn't know exactly what we were going to be doing with it. Now we know a little bit more and some of that's scheduled for next year, so even though we're below seventy five percent, it's known. And okay, and some of that will go in next year's budget.
And taxes aren't due till like May fourth or seventh or something. I mean, it's been, I think it was late last year and then getting closer to the normal time this year.
Yeah, last year was late and then last year we also were getting so many that were late from the year before tripling in at random points. But yeah, we, they're they're due in May, but typically March, April is when we get them or when they're really collected. And we don't get the March money, the what was collected by the county, we don't get that until April, so it's a little bit of a delay. Uh expenditures should be right around seventy five percent, we're just below that, that's a lot of that grant spending, just like it is for um. The revenue side of it, so nothing really of concern there. I agree. Any moves down to the next? Um, the next one is our insurance reserve fund, this is fully funded by a general fund transfer that we just do at the end of the year, so there's no revenue there. And the primary focus of this is insurance premiums that we pay in August, so we're now just. The only things that'll really hit there is if we have any claims paying our deductibles. Yeah, okay, so um twenty one, so nutrition services, this is the unique one that has just been wonderful to us this year. We have collected so much revenue more than we even anticipated, all because of the federal free lunch program. On the flip side, we are, we do have some, our expenditures are coming in high because the cost of doing those prepackaged meals is a little bit more. We had expected this when we did second quarter, we're still seeing those trends, we should be pretty much right in line with budget. For expenses, but they will definitely increase their fund balance and may not need as big of a general fund transfer.
I apologize, you supposed to districts to help your deductible, like are we on a high deductible sort of thing, we're not self insured.
No, we're not self insured, um, so how, so an insurance reserve is not health insurance.
Okay.
That's all in our general fund.
Okay.
It's the the deductibles for our liability property.
Okay.
Auto insurance.
Hopefully they'll mean that.
Right, we have little ones here and there, but nothing astronomical, not gonna. I think um. And our deductibles are still low for that, like a thousand dollars. Uh, Fund Twenty Two is our grants fund, so this is really Title One and Title Two. Again, this is also a federal reimbursable grant, so we we can put in for reimbursement and it just pays for salaries, really for employees, a little bit of subsidies. And so we do, at the end of the year, we just do a request for those funds, we'll see that money come in May. But we're right in line there. Fund Twenty Three, so this is athletics and activities. This one is also mostly a general fund subsidy with a little bit of tuition and fees or fees and. Fees and concessions, things like that, um, so we'll get that money transferred in, but this is much more in line last year about this time. I think we were around fifty percent spent for expenditures because of the weird shift in seasons and things not happening because of COVID. So seeing us at seventy two percent spent right now is ideal, um, because that means things are back to normal a little bit. And then the last one is our capital reserve fund and again, fully funded by a general fund subsidy. And then the projects are low here and that's traditionally because the main time that they can do those projects are summer. And sometimes they can get them in and do a lot in July and August and they're either overspent by this time or maybe like way above or way behind. And so this time they have a lot of things scheduled for the beginning of summer, so we should see those hit right at the end of the fiscal year.
We're talking about nutrition services, we have plans for summer breakfast and lunch.
We do not, they um.
I know there's been some changes at a level.
Yeah, we will not be, we are not a summer program school district. So we don't have anything planned there, unfortunately, it was good over the past two years, we saw not a, not a ton of people leaving. But we did have consistent families, so unfortunately we won't have that, but we can still guide them to.
Community resources.
The community resources.
How many families will we actually?
I would say like twenty a day.
And oftentimes they would pick up four multiple days, so they weren't coming to everyone.
And so it was probably split half and half between people that would go get them at Eat Pass and then down here.
Thank you, any more questions for Suzie? Thank you. Our lease purchase updates.
Sure, we just wanted to give you an update on where we are with that whole process, that timeline is something that RBC has put out for us. And just yesterday, Susan went up to spend the past, so maybe you could talk about her a little bit around the tour. They just need to make sure that the asset is actually what it's going to be, what it would be appraised for, so this is.
Yeah, I did a walkthrough with Ryan from Vectra Bank and really he just wanted to make sure that there weren't like pipes hanging down and everything like that. I mean, it was, it was short and sweet, but very impressed with the building and that he sees no issue with us having any, having any issues at closing.
I have a document for Tina to sign, we'll get that all set and ready and sealed.
I will sign it.
We'll get that signed and sent off to them and then the the closing will be on the thirteenth. Did want to, you know, we're working with um to get an RFP for owner drop, that would be our next step. That RFP will only be for the projects that we submitted for best. If we do receive the best grant and we have an extra sort of million dollars, we would go back out for another RFP to manage those those million dollars. If the owner's rep would be less than fifty thousand, we wouldn't, so we'll see what those projects and that theme, but just want to let you know. Hopefully we can have that pretty soon and posted in public sites, what's the website?
Um, Rocky Mountain Bay. Mountain Bay, it's the whole region, yeah, I've been that, thank you.
That's only the, all the updates, just wanted to have the.
Sorry, still looking at the timeline.
So a question on how we get the next month. Money at the bank, get another draft on. When would we like? We pass.
So we have, we're working with the roofing company right now and they are so far behind. We started that, it's the roof for this building that was damaged in the December windstorm. And it, I can't remember the exact date, it's next fall, I think, the earliest that they can come and do any work, so. The, it's scheduling contractors and actually being able to get that work done, it may be sometime just because of the nature of.
Well, I just wanted to, because it's what we're doing, we're staying. The objective about the water main is four months out.
Right.
So I've just wondered if we had somebody under contract, if they had the materials, if they're available or if we could order them. Have them for the fall day or if that's going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Everything's an issue, we're, we're looking at it right now.
Yeah.
One thing in the best is that we are not dependent on knowing about best in order to start this project, so if in fact we start the roof or the front entry, we could do some of those maybe. We could, we would still be reimbursed by that, that's. Application.
Any other questions? Right, June retreat and topics for discussion. Wonder if it's going to be hard to set a date with Natalie not here or. If she also had a conference. We might be able to text her, I don't know what she's like, but can we look at June just to see what works for those of us and then we'll go from there? And it doesn't have to be on a Monday. It does have to, Suzie, you need it at a certain time, right, or at least we have to have a separate meeting for the budget at the end in June. Seems like there's always a June date.
There is a June date for the budget, just as long as it's before June thirtieth.
Before the thirtieth, but not before, because sometimes there's things that you say you have to reconcile prior.
There's usually a little bit of a delay because of legislation, but I think that we won't have an issue with that this year, so anytime.
Okay, thank you for being so flexible in June, so thoughts around people's schedule on what days might be best.
I can do any day of the week of the twentieth. We have people in town week before or it's kind of the week after.
So I will be in Wisconsin and training the entire week of the twentieth or the sixth. Super exciting, I have another option, I would take it if I have to. I'm sure, Madison, Wisconsin, somebody keeps telling me it's hip, I'm like, we'll see, it's really cool, I mean, it seems, it seems like it will be pretty. And I mean, and it is a conference I want to go to, however, that does mean that that week is done. So and Jack, you're out the week before and the week after, so then the week of the sixth.
I'm gone.
You're gone, all right, well then, who's okay missing the board retreat, because um that's the way, well, here's this, we could meet and redo, we are adults. And we could say we're going to wait till early in July and do the board retreat in July, because it has to be due.
We have a meeting in June, that could be, if it's budget related, we could do that.
Right, we could just have a quick meet, yeah.
What about the week of the? The week of the thirteenth? Yeah, we have people coming in that. For beautiful Oklahoma, it's a great time to not be in Oklahoma.
Yeah, um, and you're gone the the first week in June.
I've gone from four through the eleven.
Okay.
First, second, third. I'm not a little more of the first and the second. Just guys want to do it, we're going to have it up there. There's no distractions.
No, um, well, what do you think about waiting till July then? We'll have a shorter meeting in June, everything that we need to cover, of course, let's see, I would have to, that June meeting would be on the.
I don't think we've said this.
It's on the twentieth, it's on the twentieth.
Yeah.
So I can make it. For a meeting, but I couldn't make it for a retreat, we were thinking about making the retreat for that.
So do it for a meeting and just come in remote from Wisconsin. Now, I I understand, as I recall them, I thought there was some part of them because June twentieth is June eighth, correct?
It's June twenty second is the day, the.
Oh, June eighth, sorry. Day off.
So June twenty second is the board day we're looking at?
It's the board day.
Okay.
Oh, because it's still on our calendars, the twentieth.
Right, a work session on calendars.
Okay.
Yeah. Twenty second as well.
Oh, it just popped up, is that new, I haven't accepted it yet.
I'm supposed to be going twenty second, twenty first through July one.
Thanks, it's kind of busy.
I don't have some dates, friends.
Available for. No, just kidding.
Um, the week of July eleventh versus six.
Maybe Monday of that week, July eleventh.
Our district carpets are getting cleaned that week, so that's.
We'll be enough for four people.
Yeah.
I've, I have a check in for me right now at that point.
July eleventh, I have a. Hours tonight, but I don't think I can be at that meeting.
I'll wait and see. What that work for you here, July eleventh? I thought, yeah, I'll be retired really well by then, so. You'll be in your group, maybe. I'll be having, I don't know what comes there. Have to work around your nap schedule. Once you get set, I mean, you don't want to mess with it.
Or like the budget approval, June should do. Six. Or before four on the thirteenth.
We're talking about June or we're talking about July now?
Oh, June.
We'll be there to approve the budget by then.
Like June thirtieth.
May hopefully be more of just a formality because we'll, you have, like, the bigger information will be in the proposed budget that we'll review in May. And there's not many changes, or you would know of what the changes are going into this.
So that would be technically the second reading of the budget.
Exactly.
For true.
Yeah.
So for June meeting and a July retreat. Is that right?
The June meeting will be pretty lean, right, I mean, a lot of it is just the budget.
It's also the formative for me, but that could be scheduled.
That may be in July, sorry.
No, that's fine, I'm going to make sense with the retreat.
Well, I mean, otherwise you're going to get, I mean, because I, I'm, I'm happy that it's the budget and maybe just only a few other items to either prove. Stay briefly or not at all, so I mean, I'm not going to hold everything up to my schedule. If it's, not that the budget's not significant, uh, it won't, it's, right, no, I agree with it, not packing it all, all year, it's not like all of a sudden something.
From monitoring, it's a lean, it's.
Okay. So just a date.
June sixth or thirteenth? Might be the sixth.
Of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just talking an evening meeting, right? Yep, yep, I'm good, sixth of you.
We could do it early too, or whatever's better for your work. Oh, that's right, can you do it virtually?
You need to be there, Gary.
Yeah. Who is, who is so?
You need to be at the meeting. It's there, yeah, yeah, that's okay, all right, so we're in the sixth, what's a good time?
I'm not going to do this, it don't matter.
I'm working at you, I'm not even making eye contact.
I'm good anytime I push, you know.
Yes, they're silly. Um. I'll still be working that day, so I mean, I prefer four thirty or later.
That work for you guys? Yeah, I'll just.
Do you want us to be later?
These are five o'clock, so I'll move them to the next week.
Five o'clock, so we can move them around.
Right.
Four thirty on June sixth, regular meeting and no work session in June at all, is that right?
That makes sense, because it looks like.
Let's meet up. July.
What we decide on July, nothing yet.
She's fixing that way. We have to do work, some work session already on June sixth. We could or not. Just like a.
We could, we needed to, yeah, depending on, we'll set, we can set that and then what we decide we need to do, we don't have any, anything scheduled starting in July.
Great, just with block four thirty on, on the sixth.
So July eleventh, do we want to do something earlier?
That's going to have our.
Or something later.
Retreat involved in that, that's going to be a fair amount of discussion or not.
Natalie, can you talk to us?
I wrote down a couple of things that I already had in mind for that. So like twelve o'clock. Eleven? Um. Were we going to do anything, try to do another meeting after it? Like, are we going to make that our day?
It'll be your day.
I'm free from eleven to four on the eleventh, but I have a meeting at four on the eleventh.
On the three thirty? That's good, probably.
Yeah.
It's probably enough time, maybe it'll be official. Get all the information out beforehand, but. I know a lot of stuff to discuss, but. But we'll be just eleven to three thirty or for me mature, that is for next video, yeah.
Topics for that meeting, we'll do the format assessment.
Probably should set the regular meeting. For July right now as well.
Yeah, we can.
For the work session.
Or do you want to try to do the one?
Yeah, well, because.
Eight point of hours is a pretty hefty chunk of time.
In the cycle, will we be ready for our work session or a regular meeting by then, but we can, we can form that out later and we get closer in June, thirteen meetings aside. But we need to talk about, so when will we get our community staff and everything surveyed data about?
On next, our next regular meeting.
But so we'll have it to discuss at the next meeting, okay, that's.
Yeah, I'll present.
Okay, awesome, so then July, we can do our strategic plan reflection, kind of like talking about what we did last year, how'd that go, what are we doing this way we have worked.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, a big item would be, so we're looking at the actual, you know, of what we've accomplished based on the feedback and surveys and our, our student achievement data too. We'll, we'll know more from the state at that point, a little bit more, um, and then also as we did the, the action plan feedback, that's how I see that.
I mean, it's, it makes sense to do that at the board retreat in July, okay, just.
I think that gives you all time to give your seal on the action plan and or make any adjustments before we kick off with staff in August. We'll already have started a lot of that work in the summer.
Can we um talk about? Um, whatever the next work session is, I wanted to go back to talking about a community leadership academy. And what that might look like for D fourteen.
Trying to know what that is.
So prior to COVID, I talked about in other districts, students, um, well, often the DAC is a source of information and engagement with the community. You know, that community engagement has to go two ways and sometimes, you know, in education or we just start throwing out these terms, we do all these things that are just industry standard. And people are like, what are they doing and why are they doing it? And again, even the explanations have so much jargon and pieces to it that it's not really accessible. So Community Leadership Academy is, is kind of a development of community leaders, but also community ambassadors. It's almost like highly, you're getting people highly trained on different topics from different departments within the school, so they really understand what are the things going on within the district. So they may be future board members, they may be future DAC members, they may just be very skilled, engaged participants in the system. But generally, the board sponsors it in a lot of districts, sometimes a staff member does, um, but then it would be like, you know, a board member, it's Suzie, might partner one night and host this group. But generally, you kind of have an application and you have a cohort, it's not just like show up whenever and maybe I show up, but it, and then, you know, it's like a certificate at the end, we kind of a celebration of this cohort of people that have attended. You know, maybe six meetings out of eight offered or something like that, maybe there's a leadership project. Some districts partner with the Center for Creative Leadership or other groups like that, um, once they expand the program. And so that's what I was trying to, starting just very, very fledgling, um, trying to develop before COVID hit. So I would like to get the board's kind of thoughts and approval of me moving forward or something like that, and I don't have anything tangible right now. But it's something that that's going to live live, how you can get support because I want, you know, other board members to be present at different meetings. But it's something that I think can really just engage the community in in just more ways. And if you don't like that idea, tell me now, so I don't waste time on it.
Well, I mean, we've talked about. Uh, discussing avenues to, to. Communicate and work with the community, also with staff and students, so that sounds like a good avenue for community connection. Love to learn more about it, but as far as the content of what's really happening, but. So far, so good, you got more than I have. We might get some feedback from the survey as well, I mean, we haven't had a ton of, which is okay, we have a ton of community folks show up for public comment, for things that may try to know. Cat, how many of the volumes of people that are logging in to watch on demand their meetings.
Hundreds are logging in to watch this.
Between five and fifteen, twenty.
So, so, so just like, you know, I think we want to make sure that we're filling a need that exists or a desire that exists because as we, as we look at our schedules, I mean, all of us have stuff going on.
Okay, Jack, I'll take care of it.
I want you to take care of everything, you have lots of other stuff.
I sure do, but when I think things are important, we all got twenty four hours in a day and you figure out how to use them. So idea being, if nobody wants it, nobody's going to show up. So idea being, if nobody wants it, nobody's gonna show up and then we don't do it. But I mean, if, if we put out applications to people and we ask people, would you like to come? And they do, then we have a cohort that's engaged and interested. And even if it's 12 people, I'm happy to spend my time doing it because that's 12 more community members that go through a process that highly educate them in the district's processes and purpose.
I think it's, it'll be a nice timing after, starting, starting in August, that families will want to be engaged. And I think it'll be a nice timing.
Yeah.
I think it differentiates, I know like we have the ongoing board meetings and I think. There's not a lot of attendance, we have to understand this, but I think if we look to actually reach out and be a little more personal and identifying people that want to be involved. And be a part of the district, I think that helps, it helps with perspective. You know, so we can, we can do some proactivity with regard to finding people that would participate. We're gonna benefit from that. Community involvement.
Let's be honest, board needs support.
Yeah, so if people have, you know, they can say, hey, I'm gonna do this for six, eight sessions and have the ability to help shape the district, you might get some, some upgrades for that.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to see, like, start brainstorming who we could partner with, like a Center for Creative Leadership. You know, some leadership group in like for UCCS, some kind of leadership certificate, right? To say, you know, you've done something, you spent the time, maybe worked on a project, you're contributing, that kind of thing. It may not happen the first year, but it might be something that builds towards.
Yeah.
So I'll see what I can come up with.
Put that on the May work session agenda, is that right?
I was gonna put it on the July at the board retreat, because I don't think between now and May, I will have time, a few things. So I can start reaching out and making those connections, but to have something, a proposal, we'll wait on that. So I think those were all the things on my list for the board retreat. I mean, not that this is the only call for that, but is there any other thoughts popping on?
I think staff engagement, but I think you alluded to it, I think having staff engagement, we talked about the staff license, the board of people here ago. We'll get some feedback from the survey next month, which is really fast, so that's great. But how to really understand how, what the district and what the board can do to best support the staff. And so, so a part of that is, you know, X interviews, I know that, you know, we had a couple of pretty popular teachers that were signing last month that were in the, in the packet, just trying to understand, I know there's our paper one day last week and I rarely read papers, except when I'm walking it back into the house for Mr. Sharon. But about 400 openings, a third of those were D twenty, well, they're a big district, you know, so we're feeling that. We can say, well, that's everywhere, but if we're saying the magnitude is different because we're smaller, more nimble and can be more individualized and personalized. Then what are those things we can do so that we're not, our district's not a victim of times? Is it going on in healthcare too? I mean, education's only secondhand healthcare with turnover, people are tired already, all that sort of stuff. So, so having the staff engaged and what do they need and how do they, how do they want to be heard? But I don't know, we've asked that question. I don't know if it's part of the survey, I don't, just that survey, so like I said, it's, he sent us a copy of it, so I think that's part of the survey. How do you want to be, how do you want to be heard?
That's, that's specific questions. No, it's important.
And you brought up Jack from the last the last retreat a year ago. It might be worthwhile to look at those charges that we carried forward. So trauma from care, diversity equity, curriculum were the, were the big charges, right? That we kind of continued on with. And I don't know if it's worth seeing progress and where we're at with those. So those might be worth checking in on, how are we doing, do we need more attention or, or what?
Part of you change, or do we need to add something?
Yeah, yeah.
We need to add a different focus, again, staff engagement.
Yeah, that July meeting is when the DAC, when you all provide the next DAC charge, charge question. So we can provide an update, it's where we are and saying, all right, we need to keep doing this, we're starting.
Yeah. Yeah, so we don't add more charges when old charges are stuck in the mud or, you know, maybe they're all cruising right along, but it's probably good to see where we're at with them.
They're well institutionalized.
Those are big things and they take, they take a lot of time to take home, so.
So can I just recap what I think is on that?
Please.
I have staff engagements, just from a lot of different data entry places around that. Action plan feedback, read the drafts, get feedbacks in addition, thinking about the community leadership program. And then re, revisiting the DAC charge questions, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can add more, I mean, it's July, but we did start thinking and forming that now.
A part of the staff, they might be, because by then, who's staying and who's going will probably be more known, I assume, by July, so school starts August. So, you know, getting feedback from folks on why they, why they left or why they stayed. I mean, actually asking people directly to get some feedback on that. Again, they're like built-in consultants, it don't cost anything.
And it's important, I mean, you mentioned healthcare, I mean, in, in one of my professions, you know, we're looking at, at that health, which is multi-thousands of people, they have mass access of of staff due to hostile work environments, very, very toxic environments, just because of the pandemic and all the pressure that they're under. And so they're looking to our group to, to come in and provide trauma from care training, but, but essentially, what we're talking about is creating a culture that, that understands people and that can care for them rather than steamroll them and churn through them in, you know, record pace. And so we can find, there, there are things that we can do that, that don't necessarily cost money, you know. And so the more we can pay attention to how we not only retain, but attract good talent. Money's not the only reason, and in education, it's never the reason.
Never the reason.
So, but is, and so, you know, empowerment, the opportunities to do something beyond just being a cog in the wheel is, is something that's attractive, I think, just to attract potential staff. And there is other things that we can do, it's environment, it's culture. But, but yeah, the, as Jack said, the people that are leaving are great, and the people that are staying. Both are great opportunities to get, get this information, they know what, what they would like. And that will help, help us design plans to attract everything and improve culture, because when you start to give these little things and opportunities, people want, want to be here. People are seen and heard and they like coming north.
Which, I mean, is some of our important conversations we've had for the last two months around late start Wednesdays and the values that those times have provided for staff. And, and yes, we know that there, there works in progress in some departments or some schools. But over, overall, from our staff, I have not heard a person who says to me to stop. They need to get better, but to that end, that has been seen to be of time where they have uninterrupted time to be with their colleagues. And tremendously grateful for that. So I just give you that feedback in the, in the board meeting on the eighteenth, is that the date? I'm gonna provide a little bit of some summaries of that, these findings and just, just some conversations we've had. So that we told the community of May, we would make the final decision about when it starts.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good, and that's a good example, that's a differentiating factor. Not every district does that, and to your point, we can look at it, see how do we fine tune it and how are we using it? But, but the fact that we have that is unique and we can do more of that. Are there costs? Yeah, I mean, maybe. But some of those differentiating factors that, those are things that people and staff look at when, when looking for where they want to go.
That's good. The biggest cost is it's kids, not a kind of educators, so as long as the time for the educators helps them, which it sounds like everybody's saying it does, to be more effective and to be more fresh, to be more present. And it sounds like that's a good return on investment.
And to look really at, to your point, so if, if the students are not in front of the bulk of the staff, what can we do with students? So we use that time in an alternate way that provides something to students that, that other districts don't provide as well. We can use that time and get creative around what can we do to students during that time as well? That doesn't take out, you know, one to 20 or whatever our ratios are in the classroom. We still get things done and provide value rather than just say, you know, and sometimes it is sleep. For example, homework, that's true. You know, sometimes that is very, very important, but we could look at some programming around that timeframe as well and add to our, our list of awesomeness.
And I, I'd also like to add, you know, a conversation maybe around, again, like some of the demographic information that has come through from the census. And then in addition, maybe a conversation around differentiating ourselves from maybe some of the rhetoric coming out of the county overall. If there's some just overarching conversations around those things, I would be interested.
I'm sorry, Natalie, can you clarify rhetoric from the county?
I know, I'm being very vague, um, you know, I, I can't.
My, 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 my little brain could run rampant on what the possibilities are.
And I, and I do think I want to keep that vague for the moment, but, but I mean, again, you know, there've been conversations around critical race theory and challenges to different levels of administration throughout other districts and just this, I don't want to say it's an opportunity, but I do feel like it would be nice to move forward intentionally in a way that maybe highlights how we differ from some of that.
Or healthy.
Maybe that's, yeah, healthy, healthy, there we go.
Just as Natalie's talking, it reminds me that we're still working on the community survey. I took a stab at it, we both said, no, this isn't what we really want to get at. And so we're, we're getting to some organizations in town recently who have provided some community engagement type surveys. So I, I hope y'all are okay, that it's just not gonna come out right now, but we're, we're working on it and I think it'll be valuable.
Yeah.
I think it will contribute to the action plan, but just want to be better.
Yeah, want to get it right.
Yeah, better right, that's. And we'll have some updates on our numbers, I know that from that elementary school, you heard some numbers for potential kindergarten enrollment. I know there's a lot more going on around getting students, so we'll have some numbers on. Because obviously, well, you'll need that for the budgets, Suzie, is that right? So we'll have some of those next month.
That's actually a good question. You mentioned the budget is restabilizing to pre-COVID kind of pattern. Is enrollment as well, because we know COVID blew it out of the water. And so I see Eric shaking his head too, so no, enrollment is not, it's not back to pre-COVID kind of patterns that we're staying. But I know everybody expected kindergarten to be huge this year and it sure was. Yeah.
I think it's to these points about demographics and how many families have school-aged children in the school district and who can afford to live here.
I can't afford to live here.
But yeah, we'll have those updates for sure. It's, they're always a little preliminary because we know who we've accepted, but sometimes people leave. But it's usually pretty predictable, so, but they have, I can just tell you that we had a long conversation with Marcy and the team that our numbers for 504 and special education are out of cap. And we are not able to accept any.
Out of district.
Out of district.
Right, that they accept in district.
I don't know if people, make sure I got that correct.
No, that's true, we're, you know, we're looking at per building cap of, you know, 15 students per case manager, per teacher. Try to keep the case, let's make it law and get one of those draws to magnitude of work here is a lower case list. So we want to, you know, honor that and keep that even across the board. And that's, yeah, that's where we're at right now, especially with areas like speech language. I mean, if students, it doesn't sound like a good draw, but you can't provide the service, you can't accept the student. So that's, that's where we're trying to be very careful and thoughtful to make sure we serve our students well. Anything else? All righty, policy GBKR review process and discussion.
Yeah, the last, this is board meeting, Tina mentioned that, you know, those were the GBEP and GBL and AC that we need to revisit based on some inconsistencies and unfinished policies, actually. And my, we talked, Tina and I talked, that I'd like to have draft of what these, all of these sort of policies that are related for the May work session, so that you can see how they all connect and how they talk to one another, if there's accompanying artifacts or things that need to be there. But our thinking is that if you could see the first reading in May during the work session, we can make some revisions. In May, the board meeting can have a first reading. July, we can have a second reading and these policies would then be in place for August as we start. They're very complex and they all talk to each other. And we have some recommendations from Dawn, but also in terms of the grievance process. I'd love to provide a couple of different samples of what we think could be helpful. And maybe we find a, a blend of that, but then we want Dawn to, to then re-review those as well. So that's our, I just wanted to talk about the timeline, so y'all are okay with that.
You're not writing new policy, you're getting a policy, right, so that's ridiculous. And I mean, is it coming from Casby, is it coming from other districts, it's a combination.
Combination.
Okay.
Can we, when you do that, because that's gonna be a big lift and a lot of reading on very, very important stuff, so we want to get it right. And so there'll be, need to be in my, a significant amount of background work that need to be done before that gets to us. And then it's gonna have to get to us, not just one week before the meeting, because we've already seen people's schedules are busy. So, and then is it worthwhile, since I know there's employment council that we've talked about a few things and that's what they do. Whereas John does the whole breadth of school districts and how he's got areas that he's really, really good at. Would it be worthwhile to have somebody from actually, that just does this, and that's all they do? Look at these as well, because I'm more than happy when I don't know the right answer to talk to somebody that's smarter than I am, which is often. And so I think getting smart people involved will make our lives much easier, which is really what it's all about, except for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So does that, does that sound reasonable? I mean, I'm happy to look at policies and I've looked at thousands of healthcare policies over the years. And I'm good at that, but this is not my area. And I think getting somebody in addition to John, so not, not instead of John. But in addition to John, to give a final look at these, I think would make it much easier for us to focus on. What's important for us as an individual board.
I, it's totally possible, I think there's a lot of, that makes a lot of sense too, because there is school law and then there's also employment law that is also.
And then there's the compensation law.
So I think we can, getting this right, our feeling that we feel really good about this overhaul because it's gonna be A, G and J, they're all connected. And you could be looking at 10 to 12 policies, so I think we can get it out sooner. At least maybe the Monday before we can do that, or the Friday before. It would just be the turnaround that I can get, we can get this done and then employers' council can, can also do it. Because I'd like your first reading to be a really good reading, not a reading that then needs to go back to employers' council. Or May. We can do it, I, I just want to make sure that they're totally okay with that timeline for getting it approved by August.
So I think if we, if we want it to be approved.
Yeah.
Again, it's not an emergency, nobody's gonna die if we don't get this done. We'd like to get it done right, and as we've seen, policies that are maybe suboptimal written end up costing more than another one of getting the policy credit would be, would be my, my thing.
But I think if we start in May.
Sure, okay, perfect.
Be able to get it.
Right, I like that recommendation, I think anytime we can get a third party to.
Just saying earlier today, we need shirts that say urgency, get some.
Don't do urgent care, don't know what that's like.
Everybody good with that process? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You passed both these. I'm assuming Marcy, you're going to talk to us about this?
She's going to join us.
Okay. I feel like I'm intimately involved with this fact sheet.
You can. Thank you. Well, I just wanted to start the conversation and let you know that, as you know, we, we have past bosens that's been in operation for how many, 15 years, 19 years. And they've done a really remarkable job in terms of providing special education services and gifted, gifted education for our community for a long time, partnership with Cripple Creek and Wither Park. Over the last probably year and a half, we've been talking with Marcy and I and also with Tina and Gary as they serve on the board about just what it would mean if Manatee Springs either became part of the Pike's Peak or became our own administrative unit. There's a lot of things that have to be considered there. First of all, the impact to the current BOCs. We never want to do something. And first of all, the state wouldn't allow us to, to move in another direction if our move was going to affect other school districts and/or we could sustain ourselves. So there's a lot of, lot of this, a lot of work goes into this and some of the why you might be saying, why this? Why now? Really from looking at the great resources that are through the past BOCs. We have at this time, one student who participates in Center Base Program and Wither Park. We have a lot of our own special education staff. So we, the, the staff would continue to be members of our school district. We have a couple of SSB, SLP, speech language pathologists that are, are employees of the BOCs. Our district most likely they would become those roles, whatever capacity. But that's getting out way ahead of what was being proposed. We just wanted, I just wanted to talk through the, the why. We do it as a district, all of the administrative aspects of the BOCs from Suzie, it's the budget parts, HR, technology. And so the, the impact to our school district is pretty significant, especially as the BOCs has grown in good ways when it first started. Two, few employees and now it's grown. And you add FSR grants and funding sources and all of these different changes. It has impacted our school districts. And we also don't know what the other school districts might do. So that opportunity that either, we, we tried to look at a new app pathway, all three districts do. And so the BOCs dissolved completely. So we're in conversations with the other BOCs, the other school districts, but just wanted to run this by you. Doesn't mean we have to take any action. Essentially, it would allow us to first meet, be our team to start the dialogue of, of doing the, the dike here. So I just wanted to be really transparent. Right after this meeting, I'm going to send an email to all of our special education gifted, gifted education staff saying this would not have any impact on them in their roles. In fact, any change wouldn't happen until the 23, 24 school year. Essentially you apply, you have to notify the state and you have an entire year to sort of get everything in order. So there's no impact. We don't want to cause any stress or anxiety to our staff. And this is hard. It's not a reflection of anything around performance at all. We have a really good working relationship, but just thinking about, you know, what, what that might be for us. So I just wanted to be, put that all through.
Gary and I are on the board, so we've kind of had some of these discussions.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay.
It would, I mean, if, if it came this direction, if we became our own AU or we went to the Pike's Peak BOCs, we would still have to have some significant position as executive director of some sort, because we, we do have a significant special education population. We want to make sure that we're in compliance. Not only that, that we have great instructional program, we even have teams. So I'll just keep y'all posted as we go. But right now, you don't need to take any action. If we do design to move forward, there is a resolution that the board will have to approve. And that's just being courteous to the BOCs, saying they're going to, they're going to submit this application. And if all of the districts decide, then we would just submit one as a BOCs.
I know one's reached and now that as legislation is changing and administrative unit process is changing. And I actually went to the Colorado Association meeting on Monday and Tuesday and gathered more information there as well about, like you said, different options, different districts go different directions. What does that mean application wise? So, because it's a really pretty robust process. Thank you.
Thank you.
The superintendent evaluation process and June, now July formative.
What, what you posted here are just the discussions from Karen Reynolds and what they did in District 20 and how they tied it more to executive limitations versus the standards that were really not, not essentially tied directly to the executive limitations and statements. So I just put this because that was something that she shared with us. Hope I put the redacted.
Are these ones that you seem to think encompass the sessions that we've had today?
A hundred percent. I mean, if you pull up the one titled superintendent formative assessment, we would just change those ends and the else to match, match ours. I think that will make the whole process a lot cohesive with our system.
Right. And it even has them, right, to be monitored in. So you know, the monitoring report, when you'll see that and you can tie the monitoring reports then directly to it.
And I know from, from their process that when you go to evaluate that formative, then all of those are kind of somehow connected like in digital packets. You see all the ELS and all the statements together.
Ties directly then to the summit. Does anybody have questions or thoughts on this? Or is this kind of like, you have to use it to see how it plays out?
I like it. I'm excited.
Okay.
I know. I've always struggled. I've always struggled with our current, you know, our current, yeah, process. So this is a, this makes a lot more sense to me in my brain.
This feels better based, it feels more tangible to you?
It, it, it feels like I understand what I'm evaluating.
Okay.
More, because I, I, I tend with the wording for the current one, I tend to, it, I feel like it pushes me into the weeds a little more, just in terms of the language, not in terms of the intent. And this, with that direct correlation to the executive limitations works better for me.
Yeah, I like it because I won't have to use a calculator to hand calculate, because that feels really, really cheesy.
But there's also going to be some enhancements that are probably part of a worthwhile evaluation that may not be directly addressed by these monitoring reports. So now I'm saying we're going to have to read through this study a bit and figure out what's going to work for our district, because our district is not district one. Yeah. One of the things that we, in fact, I remember the, the woman that.
Erin?
Erin, that was at the last.
That was on.
Yeah. So when we were talking about other avenues for feedback, so I see in this one, you know, treatment of students, treatment of parents and public, treatment of staff. So having an avenue for students, staff, treatment of parents to provide that feedback. I don't know if that's included in this or if that would be discussion.
I think that's kind of some of the how and why of that, that we say, we, to do this, what do we, what, what is the evidence? We need, is that in the monitoring force? Is that in a survey? And that kind of, when you get into some of these white papers, talks about kind of what are your evidence? What are your, what are your data sources? So it's the inputs, when you look at like a logic model and you're doing program evaluation, what are your inputs? What are your outcomes?
How do you get authentic, how do you get authentic participation? And then the other thing in one of those, in the white paper was showing how any district's moving toward that, that 360 degree model for all evaluations, not superintendent, which I always liked. Now that I've done all my paperwork before.
Yeah, I love it.
Well, before criticism was a life threat. So that's not, I'm okay with it. But yeah, it was, it's like a good step in my direction.
Do we want to spend some more time with this? Or at what point do we want to, what else do we need to discuss where we want to go?
I think, I think I'm ready to say, you know, let's just move forward with what we have. I liked what you were saying about taking a look at what this means, you know, go through. I don't know if we have an opportunity to do that. So on the formative assessment, I mean, the, so the kind of rubber reads the mo, early words monitored in and then that blank. So filling in the blanks for all these things is probably going to be on, it's, I think it's the very first one that's attached. I think that's going to be key on how successful this is going to be.
That's really our, laid out in our, in our current monitoring plan. So, so those are, those are just be filled in with this calendar. So we would want to make sure that this calendar, maybe that's a retreat, July retreat is making sure that this monitoring calendar is exactly getting.
So that's all the end statements then?
The end statements, monitoring reports, yeah.
Cause those are difficult this year and last year too. I mean, because COVID and absence of data, it was really hard to, it was hard for me to make real assessments when there was not data there that was real time. It's difficult to do that. You can't just leave a blank or not applicable when you're dealing with some of these assessments. So.
There should be a data point for every assessment, just dependent on some of the growth data. We're still having a little bit of issues with making sure the types of SEL surveys are the, the right ones that we're going to do. I mean, I think, I just can tell you, I had two different parents call me last week around the Health of Kids Colorado survey. They do not like their child. In fact, said it was unbelievable that we were providing it. I listened very closely. I said, we don't give to middle schoolers, we don't give the more extended version. So I think it's a discussion that we need to have around what indicators for SEL are going to be important. And how do, how do we monitor that? Because those, those surveys have changed over the years. So they have been consistent for EL 2 and EL 3. EL 1 has stayed consistent with student achievement side.
Do we have a copy of that somewhere on our end statements? Or do we get a copy of the LP Kids survey? Cause I don't.
Yeah, I posted into that EL 2. There's only.
EL 2.
Not EL 2, it, it statement 2, sorry. The.
So that's got the actual survey in it.
It should have the survey in it. If not.
I just want a copy of the survey. If you could, as a way that you know that, just see what it looks like. So we can see what parents are.
Yeah.
How do the parents get a copy of the survey? The parents just heard about it from their children or from.
We sent home a, an opt out letter and in it is a link to where you can review the items. But there are several districts that have decided to.
They're not doing it anymore.
However, we decided to do the, the version for middle school that is, and for high school is consistent. The parent had a good idea rather than opting out. Maybe it's not often and we just have to know that our participation would probably be lower. So that would all affect, that contributes to the end statements, monitoring reports now.
Do we have any assessments that align with specific SEL, SEL programs that we are implementing?
For a while, the district had Panorama and we haven't done that since COVID has happened. We have Second Step and the Health of Kids Colorado are the two. But Second Step does have a pre and a post test that is given. And now we're doing Second Step K8. Their, middle schools and their implementation.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's something also, I know the Health of Kids Colorado is kind of broader. Are there, would we, are there specific targets that we want to measure, that we can measure more specifically?
I think there are. And I think if we do something like that, we're going to have to, and we're fine to do that. We'll have to invest financially and I think we, as a community, we need to commit to whatever we do.
To do it.
Sure, we do it and we do it consistently.
And do it well. Yeah.
So if we do, if we don't do Health of Kids Colorado and we do Panorama, there are some, there are some benefits to Health of Kids Colorado, because every two years the district's been doing it for, for over 10. So it's tied to some of wellness monies that we receive. So, but that's a, that's a good, good question.
And what years does that give them? What grade levels?
It's given 612. Yeah, definitely 612.
It's data that has been used historically in some PLC work, especially in like the 612 health and mushrooms to look at trends and which informs instruction and potential vertical alignment has been used before that help the kids. So there, it's definitely had, being able to use data to inform potential health instructional objectives.
And that PHC uses it to guide all of their sort of decision-making, their school action plans for the.
Ships.
Ships, yeah. So it, it's the most consistent data that we've had, actually. So I think there's.
And I would tell you that the, the, the mental health team is working on some of the universal streamers and different things like that, having those conversations. So it's definitely happening at the, at the PLC level.
Has the sixth grade one already gone off this year though?
Yeah, it did.
So you said you're sending that.
I'll send you the copies of.
Cause you're telling me that you're finding value in the data.
I, we find the value in the data, but.
And then you're telling me your parent, you've had some parents complain that.
It's too, it's a question or two.
So some of the things particularly that we found in our district, it's for some parents that LGBTQD questions as well as anything related to drugs, suicide, parents just, right? I mean, is that generally what you're hearing?
Trauma, right? It'll ask if you've been.
There's almost a, there's almost like an assumption that it has happened. I think it's consent, right? Like from some of the parents and thus they're like, so my kid doesn't really have an option to mark anything else. I mean, and so there are some parents that are like, nope, like let's take that off the table.
Are these anonymous? Are they anonymous?
They are anonymous.
And they're, they're.
So the complaint is that we.
The exposure to content or asking questions that they don't believe and stop me if I'm wrong, because the children are up. Because any district USA, right, parents are going to have a certain, parents are concerned that their child is not exposed to those topics and/or by exposing in those topics and asking questions, it's not either developmentally appropriate or it's not appropriate for, it's their, what they consider that their child should be exposed to.
Okay.
I mean, is that fair enough summary? Because that's what I hear from my school.
Well, I appreciate it. Sixth grade, not second.
Well, yeah.
Well, yeah, I would take an opposite point of those complaints. So I would be happy to.
Meet with those parents?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're not going to do that. Yes, thank you. At least not in this role.
The high school question is different than the high school and both the middle school and the high school have like a more, I would say, I don't know how to describe it, intimate question.
Yeah.
But in middle school, we've chosen the, the more basic. So I'll send y'all that.
The point, the point that I'm kind of making is we've had some recent issues in the district. And when we had the community forum, we talked about how do we stop this? It's about normalizing. It's about having communication. It's about kids knowing what they have the rights to do and to say and where to go and, you know, knowledge. So knowledge is power. I learned that somewhere along the way. It was a commercial and I was a kid.
So yes, and being a public entity, the public often has various viewpoints.
Trigger responses. I understand. We have a trigger.
Various viewpoints on different topics and being parents, they're allowed to do that.
But the parent who did say opting in could give a solution that doesn't feel like you're forced to opt out. So I think it's something for us. Speaking of, why you, you maybe think about the forums that we're doing, the focus groups with the external folks.
Yeah.
I think when there are folks who are attending, they're getting good information. I would say the attendance and participation is not as high. We're going to continue to do it.
Are you eating them?
No. It's like only.
An hour.
It's now. So we're going to continue, we're keeping.
I'm stopping up showing up for meetings in some places if they don't need me. So I'm just saying.
We're continuing to do it. They're, they're getting good information that will be very helpful, but I just want to do that. That's kind of where we are. We're close to starting at new pass, I think next week.
Are we getting good information from the parents that are participating?
I haven't, they, they don't, they don't share with us, but so far the folks have said that it's been.
But so far, the folks have said that it's, it'll be helpful for the school district is what the third party people have said. So, I'm looking forward to that.
I don't know, I look at, it's great ideas to get all those people involved, but there's a lot of people I work with and they're younger, and they have their families. And they'll tell you, you know, I work, my wife works, I gotta pick the kids up, I gotta take them to sports, I don't have time for this. And I think we're relating back to where maybe there was, you know, years ago, when one person worked and the mom was home and everything else, took everything, and they had a lot of time to do this kind of thing. But we see today's culture and environment the way it is, they're busy. I mean, I see how busy people are, and they just, do they, maybe they want to, but their time and family is more important.
I think we're seeing that more than ever coming out of pandemic, I agree with you, Karen. But what?
It's a change of culture, Karen, so that we have more time. It's just, it's, it's needed, this one's not sustainable.
I think what I hear is though, that some people do want to gauge a person and we're giving them the options. There's no, there's no, like, penalty if they don't show up.
Right. But I don't think we're, you know, we're looking for maybe results of like this, and we're only gonna get results like this from 10 or 20 people.
You're saying think not to look at the participation rate as a negative or a positive? You're saying not to have expectations?
But I think, you know, people like us are looking like, oh, okay, we're gonna, hopefully, we're gonna get, the whole community is gonna come in and they're gonna give us all their, well, the whole community, maybe five people. I mean, that's reality. So do we, do we go off of those five people that are maybe, it's all negative response? Do we react to that, or do, what do we do? Do we go back and say?
I think we take that under consideration. I mean, with multiple data sources, multiple viewpoints, and see what we hear. I, I would say that any input is valuable, you should consider all sources. And then you have to make some decisions with the data that's in front of you.
And so we'll keep, we'll continue, we'll go through the cycle. Our goal is that the external folks would come and present in May, so the May Board of Education meeting that they would be there as well. They are going to, that's the goal, that they can get their reports together. We said May or June, we're not gonna have a meeting in June, I wouldn't want to do that kind of content virtually at all. So we'll, we'll get it out before the beginning of the school year. They're gonna produce some type of report for us. If it's okay, Tina, just circling back to the evaluation, what I can do for the next work session as well, Kim and I can put, put this, let's see, this formative assessment using our ELS and our Ns. Make sure y'all are okay with it. I think that's a good timeline, because if there's something, when you do the formative, that you say you want changed or like, hey, in future monitoring reports, it'd be helpful if the monitoring reports could do this. We can make that change during the formative and then, because we kick off ELS pretty soon, 2020. Okay.
April, May appreciation days and weeks.
Kind of what y'all were talking about before, just where we are. Sorry, it's in your, in your notes.
I don't know, I have to get them back in my notes myself.
For the appreciation, it's kind of a bottom line.
Yeah. Yeah. So is that just show up if we can or do something amazing?
Yeah, I think if you, just so you have the date, so that if it works for your schedule, April 22nd. Love for y'all to be able to come. Danny and their team is preparing a fun staff engagement, it's Appreciation Day on April 22nd, 1:30 to 3:30. Danny, I think you are gonna see if some, a board member, Tina, could talk to the staff, is that right?
Talk to the staff?
Talk at the April 22nd.
Even he doesn't want me to talk.
You're more than welcome.
As a speaker.
Yeah, absolutely. Our speakers are Dr. Gomez, we have Chris Mason from our community and a parent, very upset. And Anthony wanted to tag in and all that, really.
Yeah, so just so you don't feel encumbered by inviting me, I'm literally booked from 7:30 AM until about 9:00 PM that day, so.
You are in, more than invited, yes.
When someone else wants to speak, no, I, I mean, I work, I have a senior breakfast, I have a senior luncheon, I have a fundraising dinner. And in between all that, I'm leading a three-hour facilitation on theory of action with a staff of 60, so already booked. You gotta get me early, sorry.
Where's it gonna be at?
It's gonna be in Memorial Park and also Natalie, I think it's also at the back, is that as well, is that right?
No, we decided Memorial Park and if weather's bad, Manatee Springs Elementary School.
Community partners will be there, we'll have some fun events, but hopefully can make it, somebody, love for you to be there.
I should be able to attend.
Excellent.
Can you set what time to that?
1:30 to 3:30. We've invited the Kiwanis and other members, Chamber of Commerce is gonna send it out to business owners. Let me keep going through, so Teacher Appreciation Week, May 2nd through the 6th. The board would like to send a message to them, we can also push that out. And then there's some really fun events coming up, just so the community just want for you to be aware of. Battle of the Books, we're hosting that because Colorado College didn't want a lot of kids in person, I think, just COVID things. So we're gonna host it, it's something like 105 Ts or the Yampi Elementary School. That won't be a ton of our kids, but it's a great recognition for our school district. Steam Nights at Manatee Springs Middle School, their first one, that's gonna be really, really cool, that appreciation date. U-Pass for the first time is doing all trips, all, all school, built rich red rocks, the night of excellence. That's a special fundraiser for special education at Manatee Springs Elementary School. They have been there for several years. If you'd like to attend, you can buy tickets, we can send you that link. World Language and Culture Nights and then the High School Signing Day. So one of our very young granddaughters here, Ashlyn will be signing there. And then graduation, so just wanted y'all to have those dates. It's just been really wonderful to come back to normal things as we've been. We had this, the social, the science fair for Manatee Elementary School this morning, which was great. So that's all, so when you have.
Is the, see, we have a work session on the fifth, and that's also cultural.
Yeah. It would be.
Will be quick, some cultural nights, that's where they have food.
Yes.
A lot of people, a lot of, I mean, if you're not familiar with it.
And it's taken a month.
See, good to my.
All the drumsticks, all the things. It's like the drums.
And the drums will be in there then? No, they're gonna be in town.
It'll be there tomorrow.
It'll be fun to put them all out.
Okay, come up here to the chat.
Okay, awesome. Any other questions about April, May appreciation days? Already? Like start Wednesday invites, that is, this is when they're happening?
That's when they're happening, that's through March, wait. Let's just say May, let's just say May, sorry, May 4th, May 11th. Not good to go in the reverse.
May 11th, I may be able to come May 11th, block it out now.
If it works for you, just shoot me an email and I'll.
Okay, I'll let you know as long as nobody goes into crisis mode.
Thank y'all.
If I can't promise. Anything else on the board? Sarah headed Natalie, she doesn't know.
What should do, Jerry?
We don't have to, it's work session.
Thanks for dinner.
We just say thanks, everybody. Paula, thank you for nachos.
No, I miss nachos.
Or is Natalie calls it a walking?
Walking taco.
Walking taco.
Walkin' taco.
The same thing in May would probably be fine too, I'm just saying.
If we had to, we have to. All right, thank you guys, have a great evening, feel better Natalie.
Thank you, I will.